Okay. Anybody else from the Department of Justice? Navajo Nation EPA?
Good morning, this is Veronica from DOJ. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning, Veronica Blackhat with Navajo Nation Department of Justice. I'll be listening in today for this call and then later on with the other meeting with Endot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackhat. Anybody else on the call wishes to introduce themselves?
Good morning, this is Terracita Clashad from Office of the President and Vice President. I'm also listening in.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Then, Mr. Tahie, could you read the agenda for us? We're on number three now.
Chairman members of RDC, the agenda reads as follows. Resource and Development Committee of the 24th Navajo Nation Council. Regular meeting Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022, 8:00 a.m. Presiding Honorable Ricky Nez, Chairperson. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr., Vice Chairperson. Location via telecommunication. One, call the meeting to order, roll call invocation and announcement. Number two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. Number three, reviewing and approving the agenda. Number four, reviewing and approving the journals, February 16th, 2022. Five, receiving reports. Report from Western Sky Community Care on their managed care organization and the services provided. Six, old business, none. Seven, new business. A, legislation 0040-22. An act relating to resource and development, health, education and human services, law and order, budget, finance, and nomenclat committees and the Navajo Nation Council establishing the San Juan River mitigation fund directing the monies received from INRE Gold Mine Release in San Juan County, Colorado on March 5th, 2015. Number 1 hyphen 18 MD 02824. And underlining the related actions be deposit in San Juan River mitigation fund after reimbursement of litigation costs. B, legislation 0041-22. An action relating to resource and development, approving emission site permit for 1.0 acre more or less for, say, See Hina Bible Church, Inc., in the vicinity of Shanto Chapter, Navajo Nation. C, approving to attend and participate in the New Mexico Catagories Association mid-year meeting at Ruidoso Convention Center in Ruidoso, New Mexico from June 12th through 14th, 2022. D, approving an in-person work session with the Division of Natural Resources, Department of Minerals for legislation on obtaining primacy for February, April 1st. Friday, April 1st, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. Eight, close the meeting to order announcements, adjournments, announcements and adjournments. Chair, that is the agenda running through the record. Back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahie. Honorable members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second.
Chair, a motion.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Second by?
Yalan.
Honorable Begay, thank you very much. Honorable colleagues. Any comments or questions on the agenda? I hear none. We'll go ahead and vote on it. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kial, which Green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland? Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Honorable Freeland? We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. We have an approved agenda before us. Number four, reviewing and approving journals from February 16th. And it was sent to us this morning at 8:18. Let's have a motion and a second.
Motion, Chair.
Honorable Begay, thank you. Second?
I second, Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Any comments or questions? None. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kial, which Green.
Thank you. Honorable Daniel?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland? Honorable Freeland is excused. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you, Shenanda. Is there a a motion to suspend the floor rules?
Chairman, out the motion.
Thank you. Second by? To go directly to new business. Shenanda, the vote for the journals was four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, motions to suspend the floor rules. Second by?
Stewart.
Honorable Stewart, thank you. This is to go directly to new business. Any comments or questions? None. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kial, which Green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland is excused. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. Shenanda, we'll go directly to new business. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, I will hand over the gavel to you, sir. At this time. If you facilitate the meeting, sir. Okay. Hakoshin, thank you, Mr. Chairman Dola, committee members and staff, and then our meeting participants. Hakoshin, legislation, which is under new business, which is A, will be legislation 0040-22. So, Mr. Tahie, can you give us a reading of that legislation? And Chairman Nez is the sponsor.
Vice Chair Walker in RDC, you have legislation summary sheet, tracking number 0040-22. Date, February 17th, 2022. Title, the resolution and act relating to resources and development, educate, health, education, human services, law and order, budget and finance, and nomenclat committees, and the Navajo Nation Council establishing the San Juan River mitigation fund directing the monies received from INRE Gold Mine really mine release in San Juan County, Colorado on August 5th, 2015. Number one, 18 MD 02824. And underlining and related actions be deposit in the San Juan River mitigation fund after reimbursement of litigation costs. Purpose, this resolution, if approved, will establish the San Juan River mitigation fund as a depository for the litigation and settlement funds stemming from the numerous gold mine, gold king mine litigations. The resolution also sets forth the process and criteria for expenditures for the fund. This legislation has, Navajo Nation Council has final authority over this legislation, which we read into the record in its entirety. The sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Ricky Nez, tracking number 0040-22. An act relating to resource and development, health, education, human service, law and order, budget and finance, and nomenclat committees, and the Navajo Nation Council establishing the San Juan River mitigation fund directing that monies received from INRE Gold Mine Release in San Juan County, Colorado on August 5th, 2015. Number 1, 18 MD 02824. And underlining underlining and related actions be deposit in the San Juan River mitigation fund after reimbursement of litigation costs. In section one outlines the authority. In section two lists its findings. In section three is establishing the Navajo Nation San Juan River mitigation fund, which includes amendments to Title 12 Fiscal Manager, Manners, Managers. Section, Chapter 29, Navajo Nation San Juan River mitigation fund. In section four is the codification, section five is the same means clause, and section six is the effective date. The first report from the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary on Legislation Number 0040-22, sponsor Honorable Ricky Nez, was posted on February 22nd, 2022, at 4:40 p.m. The five-day comment period ended February 27th, 2022. There was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comment opposing this legislation, and there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Vice Chair Walker, that is the legislation, tracking number 0040-22, ran into the record. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie, for that reading. Dahoshi, let's establish your motion, committee members. Is there a motion?
Stewart.
Honorable Stewart, motions. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Chair, Kial.
Thank you, Honorable Begay, for that second. Hakoshin, Chairman Nez, yourself and your agent, if you have an agent. Speaking to the legislation 0040-22. Chairman Nez, you had the floor.
Thank you very much. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, Kodo. He said, legislation 0040-22. Now, back in 2015 of August, August 5th. Now, the Ben Sahahhot, so, Chair, Colorado. Ah, the either, but, Chair, the non, the, and Environmental Protection Agency. Before I go any further, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, I would like to let you know for the record, my agents are from the Department of Justice, Ms. McCall, and we'll have a staff member from Water Quality of Navajo EPA. So they should be on the call. I know Ms. McCall is on the call. But back in August 2nd, 2015, EPA, the Ben Sahahhot, so, Chair. Silverton, Gold King Mine, a coal, she, all, she, had a get, and, she, a coal, gee, gee, did, has, they, they, clean up, and, yeah. It was a blowout. And at least 3 million gallons of toxic acid mine wastewater. And they, it was released into Seamit Creek. They took, ah, the, an amus river, and he, that, who, stand, and, not, did, and, the, Ben Sah, be, that, near, the, Rango, all the way down into Aztec Farmington, along the San Juan River, the chapters of upper fruitland, and, ah, the, San Juan, Hogback, Shiprock, Betty, I, the, Clavato, down to Aneth. A cohort, and, did, ah, at least 880,000 pounds of heavy metals was poured into it. The river just looked really ugly and awful at that time, and it covered approximately 200 miles of San Juan River. And I couldn't, as, nothing, did, a conscience, a tabby, got, to, gee, a, in, ah. A, co. Before the spill, our farmers, our Navajo farmers and ranchers, used the water for irrigating their crops and water for their livestock to drink, other for personal usage as well. A cohort, you know, they, they, we immediately shut down the intake valves going towards the Navajo Nation, towards the farmland. And after that, on August 8th, the nation declared a state of emergency for the San Juan River Valley. Although, Navajo Nation Environmental Protection Agency conducted their work monitor, they, on, and, and, did, did, they, be, she, gee, what, it, had, none, gee, heavy metals, gee, eh, eh, who, who, and, eh, clah, gee, been, yeah. Ah, just, the, nah, and, she, the, has, need, oh, ch, il, gee, la, ha, da, z, ah, though, so, the, but, ah, the, fish tissue, contaminant, study, eh, been, that, she, eh, gee, studies, gee, who, it, ah, eh, then, eh, though, but, oh, the, na, da, it, eh, oh, that, eh, go, the, bah, da, is, see, la, eh, then, eh, eh, she, yeah, yeah, been, eh, go, hot, eh, that, though, the, naked, that, is, last, hope, it's, on, that, eh, a lot of the crops were destroyed from this gold king mine spill. And some of the farmers, they, at, the, they, they hired their own attorneys, some were from Santa Fe, some were local, some were from Denver, and they have their own separate litigation going on with US EPA. Although, ah, just, go, further down, US EPA publicly acknowledged its fault, ah, nine, here, they, it, that, Dean, need. And there were two different congressional committees that found the US EPA to be at fault for the spill. Ah, just, a great, kind, ah, ah, great, eh, the, Washington DC, not, ah, need, a, gee, eh, could, yeah, US EPA, in, huh, nah, and, she, oh, in, eh, that, eh, la, but, oh, need, eh, though, ah, the, that, eh, the, house, and, ah, the, who, stay, huh, the, she, she, eh, in, like, August 16th, yeah, that, Navajo Nation, didn't, here, that, eat, ah, it, so, Department of Justice, eh, gee, they lawsuit, eh, gee, and, so, US EPA, ah, the contractors, then, then, eh, still, ah, just, eh, she, oh, it, ah, been, eh, nah, but, ah, the, oh, what, eh, gee, ah, the, did, eh, EPA, US EPA, eh, yeah, the, Navajo Nation Department of Emergency Management, but, eh, in, eh, yeah, huh, that, that, so, they provided alternative drinking water for livestock as well as some agricultural purposes. Ah, the, did, it, who, they, there were some huge tanks that were delivered along the river where people were at, eh, she, to, bah, eh, gee, oh, it, ah, bad, ah, yeah, and, eh, see, though, is, it, and, the, Dean, ah, close, she, she, eh, is, a, panda, eh, ah, don't, that, December 2016, yeah, eh, eh, had, did, eh, Navajo Nation Administrative Claim, or, gee, go, submit, eh, la, tort claims, eh, go, eh, yeah, cohort, eh, yeah, nature, and, that, of, gle, but, no, 160 million, ah, so, had, and, as, not, then, oh, has, had, Dean, the, meal, so, cohort, eh, nature, and, that, of, gle, but, oh, need. A cohort, eh, eh, holy, ah, and, eh, not, ah, cause, oh, nah, eh, yeah, and, so, that, as, case, oh, January 2021. The nation announced that it had reached a settlement in the consolidated case. They, coro, nature, nah, oh, nah, though, led, and, that, so, how, but, cohort, eh, yeah. They, huh, and, so, who, she, be, eh, that, eh, ah, that, eh, a cohort, eh, companies, she, eh, who, that, eh, that, eh, Ken Ross Gold Corporation, eh, defended, and, long, ah, don't, that, the, Ken Cross Gold USA, ah, don't, the, Sunnyside Gold Corp, the, ah, yeah, eh, she, eh, a great, Canada, that, go, eh, who, ah, was, huh, eh, a cohort, 10 million, big, ah, eh, to resolve claims from the 2015 spill. Did, eh, as, not, the, meal, yes, eh, oh, nah, eh, go, eh, be, eh, that, eh, eh, did, eh, be, so, gee, that, need, that, oh, deposit, eh, though, need, into the dismitigation fund, or, gee, gee, ah, don't, that, eh, she, eh, yeah, huh. Oh, okay, so, eh. And some deductions will be made for the legal work that was done. A cohort, eh, who, eh, they, so, okay, she, nature, she, but, ah, not, gee, ah, go, eh, saho, eh, eh, that, eh, that, eh, in, yeah, that, she, ah, just, she, who, eh, though, they, a cohort, eh, as, not, the, meal, so, had, eh, need, eh, gee, she, huh, nah, eh, she, though, they, be, care, eh, a cohort, eh, she, coro, she, Attorney General, and, then, eh, gee, Dorine McPaul, Joe, gee, gee, coro, she, eh, that, eh, it, so, she, eh, she, who, though, ah, though, ah, she, eh, but, like, ah, eh, she, go, yeah, and, she, who, though, and, so, I'm gonna give the floor over to my agent, Ms. McCall. Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
Hakoshin, thank you, Chairman Nez. Although, your agent, Adam AG, you had the floor to present on, from your, your office on this legislation.
Um, thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. And I appreciate the sponsor going through the background on the gold king mine spill that's also outlined in the, the finding section of the legislation here. But this particular legislation is to create a fund for purposes of the settlement dollars relating from the settlement with the mining defendants. And just for some background on the litigation, the nation's claims in this particular matter are against three sort of categories of defendants. One is the mining defendants, one is the US EPA, and one is the EPA's consultants that actually caused the spill. So even though the nation settled its claims with the mining defendants, that was announced in January of last year, the, we remain litigating this case against the other defendants, including the EPA, US EPA, as well as the EPA's consultants. So I'm available to answer any questions related to the litigation. Or if the, the committee needs additional background, I do want to share that the Ms. Belinda Begay from, I'm sorry, Ms. Belinda Shirley, from Executive Director of the nation's EPA is also on the line. The legislation outlines some of the response efforts that her department led to mitigate the spill. And the purpose of this particular legislation, as it's drafted, is to allocate funding so that her department can continue in those efforts along the San Juan River. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McCall. Although, back to you, Chairman Nez, any other agents that would like to speak, you would like to have speak to this legislation? Chairman? Thank you very much, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. I would like to have Navajo Nation EPA office, Ms. Shirley, and Water Quality staff, either one can make a statement. Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Hakoshin, Director Shirley, yourself and your staff, you may have the floor, you may have the floor to speak to the legislation, Director Shirley?
Oh, yeah, eh, been, eh, Shenat, ah, ni, no, he, ni, yeah, eh, been, in, he, Dean, ni, though, eh, ah, though, she, eh, no, he, ni, ah, no, so, yeah, eh. She, Belinda Shirley, in, she, ah, though, Executive Director for Navajo EPA, eh, who, that, a, can, ah, sh, eh, a cohort, eh, gee, um, the legislation, eh, gee, they, sad, eh, nach, it, ah, eh, or, who, eh, gee, um, bah, wind, eh, gee, eh, nich, eh, Navajo EPA, has, he, t, oh, um, nich, eh, that, eh, ah, though, um, eh, gee, has, he, t, oh, be, so, bah, has, eh, who, though, ni, ni, gee, eh, has, he, t, oh, nich, eh. The environmental technical studies, eh, ni, gee, she, eh, who, ah, been, that, eh, ni, she, ah, though, the technical studies, eh, but, eh, ni, gee, eh, um, and, lay, water quality, and, ni, gee, and, lay, the, um, a ton, the, ton, ni, gee, has, he, t, oh, she, be, who, did, eh, ah, though, eh, has, eh, has, he, t, oh, and, though, cat, oh, eh, has, eh, 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 be, kid, eh, though, he, she, eh, gee, see, when, yeah, had, eh, ah, though, who, eh, gee, Shenat, ah, ni, Chairman Nez, and, eh, need, ah, um, the, who, she, nich, eh, ni, gee, um, and, that, eh, she, eh, so, has, he, t, oh, di, tro, eh, gee, ch, eh, 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 she, who, eh, um, nich, eh, has, he, t, oh, um, di, di, tro, eh, gee, ha, late, eh, eh, gee, she, eh, who, ah, um, ha, late, eh, she, eh, who, ah, um, ha, late, eh, go, eh, who, ah, eh, who, did, eh, though, a, she, eh, hey, eh, though, um, hey, eh, who, eh, go, she, eh, who, ah, um, and, though, ha, eh, gee, eh, who, ah, nature, eh, this, eh, a cohort, eh, eh, who, ah, bah, this, eh, ah, though, the, water quality monitoring, eh, ni, gee, eh, um, has, he, t, oh, ah, eh, eh, go, been, ah, ni, she, though, um, samples, so, ah, then, ah, that, oh, has, he, t, oh, um, be, eh, this, eh, though, eh, ah, though, and/or preventive and corrective measures, eh, ni, gee, she, eh, di, has, he, t, oh, um, na, ask, ah, gee, be, eh, oh, di, eh, oh, yeah, eh, oh, um, been, not, though, ni, she, gee, though, corrective measures, eh, ni, gee, da, eh, who, eh, she, um, nich, eh, has, a, though, eh, ah, though, all of which are necessary to address potential contaminants and related issues to the San Juan River, and implement a Navajo EPA communication strategy. Ah, though, has, he, t, oh, ne, but, nah, huh, eh, gee, she, eh, who, ah, nah, has, a, lot, oh, eh, eh, di, ah, though, has, he, t, oh, eh, di, um, legislation, eh, gee, um, be, that, di, t, oh, um, the, eh, eh, though, ah, though, nich, eh, who, don, Navajo EPA, though, eh, nich, eh, yeah, eh, though, has, he, t, oh, bah, eh, eh, this, eh, though, ah, though, um, Ms. Barney, may I, may I also defer to you to, to provide any additional comments on this legislation? Are you on the line, Ms. Barney?
Yes. Yes, good morning. My name is Yolanda Barney. I'm the Environmental Department Manager for the Surface and Groundwater Department. And in 2015, there was a catastrophic event that impacted the Navajo people. And there were several departments and several groups that were involved in terms of providing water for the Navajo people. But this was more of the need for farming and for ranching. So we will work with the Water Quality Department, who has, they are in need for sampling and understanding the impacts. And it's been, um, it's been eight years. So we need to continue to understand through sampling the, the need to identify some of the contamination and the effects, the long-term effects. Thank you.
And then, just to add to Ms. Yolanda Barney's statement there, one of the other things that I wanted to mention, too, was that we do get the occasional burps. From whenever there's a, a release from upstream of the San Juan River area, we here at Navajo EPA, we do receive some kind of a notification. And just recently, about a month ago, there was what US EPA and the State of Colorado Environmental Department called a burp. So I think this certainly would help us to continue to monitor. So I think this certainly would help us to continue to monitor and help us provide those technical recommendations to the communities. So she can. He need. I don't. Um, care. That's in he. He. Has he. So go. To. He. He. So just wanted to add that little bit. And thank you again. She not only. Um, she. She not. Pretend, Chair, I return the floor back to you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Sheteshia, Ms. Shirley. And your staff, Ms. Barney, that's Madam A G. I call Chairman. Question. Is that the extent of your your presentation on the legislation?
Um, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, I would like our Attorney General to focus on what the purpose our farmers and farm board members are listening in. And there's some of the questions that they have raised. And perhaps that needs to be explained to to the folks out there. And what does it mean preventive and corrective measures? And these monies that will be deposited into the mitigation fund be utilized to upgrade canal purposes like headgates and all that? Or is it just only for the purpose of studies that we're going to do this? To monitor all these activities? What is the real purpose? Since this money was given back to the nation here? And I would like for the Attorney General to expound on that.
Vice Chair Walker. You are. Chair. Yeah, no, no. Um, Madam Attorney General, Ms. McPaul, the request of sponsor, a little bit more expansion on the questions he's brought up, the points he's made. You can do that for us. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, thank you. Uh, so in terms of the purpose of establishing the fund, the this, as it's outlined and as as Ms. Shirley has explained, it's really to allocate the funding to the purpose of the litigation, which was to mitigate the impact of the Gold King Mine Spill along the San Juan River. Without allocating the funding into a specific fund such as this, the funding would just remain in the Nation's General Fund. So it wouldn't be dedicated to the San Juan River, for example. So that's the initial purpose of this particular legislation is to allocate the funding consistent with what we were fighting for with the litigation, for the cleanup and the responsibility for this spill. Now, that's those particular efforts aren't uh, within the purview of the Department of Justice. We were working on the litigation. But the actual substantive and expertise work along the San Juan River is is through our Nation's EPA Office and and through Ms. Shirley's programs. So what will have to happen next is that the EPA, the Nation's EPA, will establish an expenditure plan that will come back to RDC as well as Budget and Finance. And it will really be up to the program to establish what the expenditure will look like. And if that is to include, for example, upgrading canals, and that is consistent with the purpose of the legislation, you know, to mitigate the effort, mitigate the impacts of the spill along the San Juan River, that will that will certainly be, you know, an available consideration to EPA as well as to the oversight committees that will approve that expenditure. But really, the the initial sort of purpose of of the legislation that's before the committee today is to separate these funds from the general fund so that they they go towards the the impacts of this spill consistent with the purposes of the legislation. I hope that answers your question, Chair Nez. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McPaul. Although, Honorable Nez, not. I'm. I'm. No, I think. Just. I'm. No, I'm. No, I'm. Chair.
Um, thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. I had told my farm board members along the river that they need to start looking at and identifying places since our Attorney General said that perhaps we might be able to have these funds after approved by RDC and BFC, that it will try and make it available for the canals. And I believe that this money needs to go to the San Juan River communities for that purpose to upgrade as well. They shouldn't go anywhere other than the communities along the river because they were the ones that were impacted. And therefore, they could start identifying and perhaps making an inventory list of within their communities, what should be at least made made better, the projects related to the canals. And eh, do. Yeah, in that area, I would like to start perhaps public hearings at these chapters for the farmers to listen as to how they can participate in this decision and say, yes, this is what we would like done. I don't think we should use all this money into just a lot of the studies. I think it needs to ameliorate the canal system as well. So these are some of the questions that were raised by the farm board member yesterday when they had a meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that the Attorney General, as well as EPA, could clarify these things to the community farmers and their farms that were damaged and affected by this spill. So. Then I. Perhaps the folks that are listening are really listening to find out what this money can be used for. I could. This is the legislation states that to establish the San Juan River Mitigation Fund. And after the other approvals by RDC and Budget and Finance, perhaps then we can say this is what we would like to have these monies used utilized for. So if that would be possible, Ms. McPaul, perhaps we can do that also. Back to you, Vice Chair Walker.
Um, I wish you, Chairman Nez. Although, Madam Attorney General, you want to bond back to the Chair?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Walker. And I, you know, I I I want to. I absolutely am in favor of public hearings and getting input from the communities that were impacted by this bill. I think that that is really the reason why the nation became involved in this lawsuit is because of the damage to the river and to the communities along the river. And so, you know, one of the things that we've tried to do with our litigation, and not just the Gold King Mine litigation, but other litigation, is to make sure that if we receive funding as a result of the litigation, whether it's a settlement or judgment from a court, is to make sure that those dollars or to at least make a recommendation to the decision makers that those dollars be purposed consistent with what we were fighting for. And I think that the examples that Chair Nez provided are certainly things that I would think fit from a non-expert perspective, but that fit within corrective measures, for example. But I would also want to defer to Ms. Shirley, who whose whose office and whose department has the expertise with respect to the things that are listed here and will be the primary drafters for the expenditure plan that will come, you know, after the fund is established, after the money is set aside, to really outline what her department is going to do with the funding. And I think that hearing from the communities about the needs is certainly, you know, something that I think would be welcomed. So I hope that answers your question, Chair. Thank you.
Honorable Nez, not. I'm. I'm. See. Gosh. I'm. I'm. I'm.
I think, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, you can open up the floor to my honorable colleagues. Thank you.
Okay. I wish you. Joe. The. I had. And. I was looking at on legislation zero zero four zero dash twenty two. Uh, sponsors on the agents. They could. She. Yeah, uh, you know, I'm. Resource Development Committee members. Uh, you. If you have questions, the floor is open. And questions or comments?
Mr. Vice Chair, this is Delka Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, you had the floor?
Yes, good morning. Good. Hey, could. Um, I don't. The could. My brother, could. The Chairman Nez. Could. Thank you for bringing this legislation for Resources and Development Committee this morning. I didn't with your with your agent. But I don't. Navajo Nation Department of Justice. But I attorney Attorney General, Madam Attorney General. Yeah, I could. I do. Could. I'm. In regards to this legislation. Could. I hope Maggie. I could. How it's presented to RDC. But eh, I see. By. He. I do. Could. Um, I need. What's. I did. Um, several years ago. Gold King Mine Spill. Now, they. And Miss River, San Juan River. Yeah, the horse. The ego. Could. The men. Then he. Has he. So. But banana. She. And he. So. Yeah, the horse. Now, they. Um, especially the the farmers along the the San Juan River. Now, they. Starting from, now they. To. Had. All. I don't stand. All along the San Juan River. Now, they. Not only Nez. But I don't. Now, they. But eh, I was. That. The. Yeah, go. Yeah, the horse. Yeah, because of the spill, a lot of these farmers, they they didn't farm that that year or the following year. So. Eh, I see. Has he. So. Eh, could. But he. Oh, yeah. That case. Could. I don't. I know. Could. The Mr. Chair. And then he. The. Uh, two hundred miles of, um, along, um, this is San Juan River. Yeah, the horse. And then he. I need. What's. All the way down to Alchea. Alchea. Uh, that's the the community I I represent. Now, they. Um, Alchea Community. I need. What's. Now, they. They have a water treatment plant. I just. Eh, that. That. They. Don't. I. Into. Eh, they started transporting water in into the community of Alchea every day, every day. Twenty. Yeah. Okay. Eh, who. That's. Like. I don't. Not to this day, the community of Alchea. Uh, we. It. What. They. Isn't. That. Even though. Now, they. Um, water treatment plant. He upgrade. And. Yeah. And. But he. Don't. Don't. Eh, see. Though. They. He. And. So it really impacted several chapters along the San Juan River. Now, they. And a chapter. Man. On the Manazuma Creek. What. Eh, go. Halchita Community. That's the only community in the that could get there. The river but if you go down further west, it starts, the river gets starts to go down in a canyon. I don't know if you go towards the east or in the canyon. But right there where the water treatment plant that's where people, community of Halchita, that's where they get their water from this water treatment plant. Other than that, that's the only community in my area that utilizes the San Juan River. Up towards Bluff, Utah. Animals again, the livestock, they go to the San Juan River. The area I represent. Towards Bluff, Utah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you, Honorable Daniels. Resource Development Committee members, we were emailed from our Legislative Council on amendment language. There is an amendment that would be proposed. Mr. Tahie, you by just to that amendment?
Chair members of Vice Chair Walker, I did receive the amendment for legislation number zero zero four zero dash twenty-two. I'm ready to read it into the record.
Okay, you may proceed. Can I tell us about the amendment? Where it would go and then I'll ask for a motion in a second?
Chair, the amendment would go on page four. Line twenty-seven. Would you like me to read it into the record?
Yes, proceed.
Vice Chair Walker, members of RDC, this is amendment number one to legislation number zero zero four zero dash twenty-two. Amendment one, one, on page four, lines twenty-seven, delete. Which case was settled on partially settled? Question mark. Two, renumber or reliter succeeding paragraphs, sections and/or exhibits accordingly. If necessary, and this amendment shall supersede inconsistent language contained in any other committee amendment. We shall be conformed to the intent or language of this amendment. The Office of Legislative Service, with notice to the sponsors of this legislation, is hereby authorized to make necessary grammatical changes. Chair, that is amendment number one read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie. Resource Development Committee members, the amendment that was read into the record. I would ask for your motion, a motion and a second. Is there a motion?
Almost.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Freeland, for that motion. Is there a second?
Stuart.
There are seconds to the motion here for the amendment number one. Resource Development Committee members.
Thank you, Honorable Stuart. So we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Amendment one for the legislation. Are there any questions, comments to the amendment? Are there any questions, comments to the amendment?
All in favor? Those in favor, Honorable Daniels, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Daniels, votes green. Honorable Freeland, how do you vote? Honorable Freeland votes green. Honorable Key Allen Bigay, how do you vote?
Chairman Kayle votes green. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Honorable Wilson Stewart, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Stewart votes green. Honorable Nez, Chairman Nez, how do you vote, sir? Delegate Rick Nez votes green. Okay, Honorable Nez votes green. We have a vote of five in favor, opposed, there are none. Motion carries, Vice Chair does not vote. I'm next. Is there another amendment we need to consider? Honorable Chairman Nez. I, yes. Oh. Okay. Committee members. Questions and comments at this time? You have the floor? Are there any questions, comments from the committee? Honorable Daniels, is that you?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, I'll let my brother, Delegate Freeland, go first.
Okay. Honorable Freeland, you have the floor?
Thank you for the legislation. I think it's a very important legislation. I just wanted to make a comment about that. And say, you know, I think this legislation is so vital. And, you know, what we need to do as far as moving forward and, you know, thank you to all the parties that are involved. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Daniels.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Community of Halchita. But
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Sponsor, Honorable Nez, you want to respond to our colleague here, Mr. Daniels?
Thank you very much, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, for recognizing me to respond. Thank you, Honorable Daniels, for the two communities that you just mentioned. Earlier, I announced that two hundred miles. Even a year after they tried to go sell their products, people were saying economically really hurt the people along the river. And I truly believe they deserve these canal mitigation. The Montezuma I believe they're tied together with Aneth over there because they do have a farm board member from these chapters from San Juan River. We need to go out there and visit Halchita. How are they established as far as their farm lands? This legislation is going to go to the four standing committees. Resource and Development Committee, Budget and Finance Committee, Health Education Human Services Committee, as well as Law and Order Committee, and then to the Nabikia Committee and the Full Navajo Nation Council. We're hoping to have this legislation come before the spring session. So it will be up to you, to make recommendations for these committees when it happens. And if you want to host a public hearing at Halchita for the farmers out there, we can probably work on something like that. But the people need to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Nez. Honorable Daniels.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you for the response. This legislation farmers. There's no farm. Water treatment plant. Because of the spill. To this day, some of the people in the Halchita area.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Daniels. So yourself and your agents, if you can respond.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, for recognizing me to respond and Honorable Daniels, for your questions and your concerns for your community. This legislation establishing the San Juan River Mitigation Fund. Related actions be deposited into the San Juan River Mitigation Fund after reimbursement of litigation costs. The Halchita, the air water treatment is on the water treatment plant. How these funds will be utilized at that time, we can start working on how if that water treatment facility should be upgraded, fixed, or whatever needs to be done. But the things that I'm speaking today are the concerns of the farmers along the river. On this legislation, it says human consumption. So if the Attorney General would like to also add, she may do so, Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you, Chairman Nez. Ms. McPaul, can you have comments or response to make here?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I don't have anything further to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels.
Mr. Vice Chair, yes. Thank you, sponsor, Chairman Nez. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Chair. And also, Honorable Daniels, the tour that we're going to have at Halchita Community is on the seventeenth on Thursday. It'll be two Thurs, the third Thursday, the third week. We're going to meet, we're going to meet over there at nine AM. Perhaps we can look at that water treatment facility at that time on the seventeenth. Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Thank you, Chairman Nez, for that information. Honorable Freeland, you have a question? You have the floor?
Okay. Thank you for the recognition again. Just wanted to ask if, I know we all support our enterprises and we all support the oversight that we have, but is NAPY getting any sort of funding aside from any sort of, I guess, related funding as well? Similar to what this fund was established for or being established for? Just a question. I don't know if there's any such fund that they're getting, or any funds they're getting to. Just a question because I know NAPY runs in our area, Chairman, your area and my area. But are they also getting any sort of related funds and if they were also affected as well? Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland, sponsor, Chairman Nez.
Thank you. Thank you. Honorable Freeland, appreciate your question. The answer is no. No. NAPY will not get, I hope they don't get any money from this because the water did not affect NAPY. Because the water. If you look at the map, it went from Silverton to Durango to Aztec. From Aztec to Farmington. The reason why Farmington is named the Anmas River flows from Silverton to Farmington. And then it, the other one from Navajo Dam. From Navajo Dam to Blanco to Farmington. So that section was never in any way affected. So when the water came from Silverton, it went to Farmington and then towards the Navajo Nation. So that's a good question. I'm sure some people would want to know if NAPY or anyone in those areas were affected. But I don't think they Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Nez, for your response. Honorable Freeland, you have a follow-up questions or comment?
Just a comment. Thank you. Chairman, thank you. Thank you for that answer. I do agree with you on that. I just wanted to put that out there just for clarity. In case there was any doubt or any questions related to that and understanding that the spill did bypass entirely NAPY's water system. And in case it's brought up, you know, we do have this on record. And understandably that this should go to our Navajo farmers directly. Those were directly affected, especially in your area, Chairman. So definitely support the legislation and I'm ready to vote, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Freeland. Resource Development Committee members, any other comments and questions at this time? If not, we can take a vote. Honorable Daniels, how do you vote?
Green.
Green, okay. Vote of green from Honorable Daniels. Key Allen Bigay, Honorable Bigay, he texted his vote and it is green. Honorable Freeland, how do you vote?
Green, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that vote. Honorable Wilson Stewart, how do you vote?
Green.
We have another vote of green. Honorable Chair Nez, how do you vote? Delegate Rick Nez votes green. Thank you. Okay, we have another vote of green. We have five in favor, opposed, there are none. And Vice Chair does not vote here. Thank you, Chair, and your agents presenting the legislation. Back to you. Giving you back the gavel. So back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Always appreciate your assistance. Honorable members of RDC certainly appreciate the committee very much and the team, the staff as well. Thank you, Ms. McPaul, Ms. Shirley and Ms. Barney. Thank you. Next legislation is zero zero forty-one dash twenty-two. Sponsor, Honorable Herman Daniels. Mr. Tahie, could you read this into the record, sir?
Chair members of RDC, you have legislation summary sheet tracking number zero zero four one dash twenty-two. Date, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Title of the resolution, proposed standing committee resolution. In action relating to resource and development, approving a mission site permit for one point zero acre more or less for the Sahana Bible Church, Inc., in the vicinity of Shanto Chapter, Navajo Nation. Purpose: The purpose of this legislation is to approve a mission site permit, for a mission site permit for the Sahana Bible Church, Inc. on one point zero acres located in Shanto Chapter. Chair members of RDC, RDC Committee has final authority over this legislation. This legislation is sponsored by Honorable Herman Daniels. Tracking number zero zero four one dash twenty-two. In action relating to resource and development, approving a mission site permit for one point zero acre more or less for the Sahana Bible Church, Inc., in the vicinity of Shanto Chapter, Navajo Nation. Section one, authority A. Pursuant to sixteen NNC, section one one five one C. The Resource and Development Committee of the Navajo Nation Council has authority to give approval for permits for mission sites on behalf of the Navajo Nation. B, pursuant to two NNC, section five oh one B two. The Resource and Development Committee of the Navajo Nation. Navajo Nation Council has the authority to give a final approval for all land withdrawals, non-mineral leases, permit licenses right away, surface easements and bonding requirements on Navajo Nation lands and unrestricted fee lands. This authority shall include the subleases, modifications, assignments, lease holdings, encumbrances, transfers, renewals and terminations. Section two, findings. The Sahana Bible Church, Inc. has applied for mission site within the Shanto Chapter. The terms and condition of the mission site permit is attached as exhibit A. The proposed mission site is located on one point zero acres more or less within the vicinity of Shanto Chapter, Navajo Nation, New Mexico. The survey of the Sahana Bible Church, Inc. track is attached as exhibit B. D, the grazing official in memorandum dated September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one and March twenty-fifth of two thousand thirteen have stated that grazing permits have been canceled in this area of the Navajo partition land. Therefore, no land users' consents were necessary. In addition, the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one memorandum states, the building is already occupied and being utilized. The community fully supports the operation of the church and there is no complaints. The March twenty-fifth to two thousand thirteen states, to my knowledge, no grazing permit other than the church has been affected by undertaking and no other land disputes at the location of the church. The December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one and the The September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one and the March twenty-fifth, twenty thirteen memorandum are attached as exhibit C. The Shanto Chapter Resolution, SH zero three dash fifty-three dash thirteen, date March twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, recommends to the Land Department and the Bureau of Indian Affairs Land Office to expedite the mission site lease application for the congregation of the Sahana Bible Church and to accept all documents showing this tract of land has met this, has met the requirement of a land withdrawal. Shanto Chapter Resolution, SH zero three dash fifty-three dash thirteen, a signed petition and statement from the Navajo Nation Council Delegate for District Two, dated February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Approving the establishment of the missions are attached as exhibit D. The biological resource compliance form two OTSBC dash oh one is attached as exhibit E. The third preservation department cultural resources compliance form number HPD nine zero dash three four zero is attached as exhibit F. The biological exhumation of the one acre residential site on the Navajo Nation, Shanto, Arizona, prepared for Sahana Bible Church, prepared by SWCA Environmental Consultation is attached as exhibit G. The application, the certification of incorporations, the article of incorporations. The sliding fee scales for the mission site permits are attached as exhibit H. The executive official review document number zero one five two six seven with reviews by the Department of Justice, Department of Water Resources, Fish and Wildlife, Minerals Manager Department, Historic Preservation Department, Division of Natural Resources Administration and the Navajo Land Department, and reviewed by the Navajo Nation Environmental Protection Agency by memorandum dated February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Indicating approved or significant are attached as exhibit I. Section three approval. The resol- the Resource and Development Committee of the Navajo Nation Council hereby approves the mission site permit for the Sahana Bible Church, Inc. Subject to, by not limited to, the attached terms and conditions contained herein as exhibit A, which is attached heretofore to incorporate herein by this reference. B, the Resource and Development Committee of Navajo Nation Council hereby authorized President of Navajo Nation to execute all documents to effect the intent and purpose of this resolution. Attaches exhibit A, which is the terms and conditions for the mission site permit. Form, um, Mission Site ten zero one twenty fourteen, amended zero five fifteen nineteen. Attaches exhibit B, which is the result of the survey. Attaches exhibit C. Which, um, is a letter from Brittany, Shanto Grazing Official, dated September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Attaches exhibit D, the Shanto Chapter Navajo Nation Resolution approving one acre of land withdrawal for the Sahana Bible Church located immediately south of Route six three zero four and one mile northeast of the junction of US Highway one sixty and Arizona Route ninety-eight, resolution number SH zero three dash five three dash thirteen. Attaches exhibit E, the biological resource compliance from Navajo Nation Department of Fish and Wildlife in NDFW Review Number two zero TSC dash zero one. Attaches exhibit F, which is the cultural resources compliance from Historic Preservation Department. Number, in HPD, number HPD ninety dash three four zero. Attaches exhibit G, the biological evaluation for the one acre residential site on the Navajo Nation, Shanto, Arizona. This was repaired by SWC Environmental Consultation. It was March of twenty-ten. Exact, attaches exhibit H, the application for the mission site, religious site Navajo Nation land, which was dated October first, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty. Attaches exhibit I, the executive official review, document number zero five two six seven. The date issue was ten twelve twenty twenty. But finally, you have the first report Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number zero zero four one dash twenty-two. Sponsor, Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. It was posted on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two at three twenty-six PM. The five-day commentary ended February twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this law resolution. There was no comment opposing this resolution and there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation, on this resolution. Chair, that is legislation number zero zero four one dash twenty-two, read into the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahy. Honorable Members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second.
Chairman, I motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Second.
Stewart.
Honorable Stewart, thank you. I wish just sent a message that there is an amendment to this legislation. Sponsor is Honorable Daniels on this legislation, so I'll give him twenty minutes to speak on the legislation with his agents. And Honorable Daniels, if you would, uh, identify your agents. You have twenty minutes, Honorable Daniels.
Mr. Chair, uh, thank you very much. Resources and Development Committee members. I am the sponsor of this, um, legislation, legislation zero zero four one dash twenty-two. Is within the Shanto area and it's in Arizona. In the legislation, it says, um, some words, it said, um, New Mexico. But I have with me my agent. General Land Leasing Department. My, my agent. Church. Um, this morning, um, Stevie Hudson tried to contact, tried to reach out to Mr. Johnson, Lincoln Johnson. But tomorrow, eh, we're gonna have a work session on this, um, on church, church site. A work session tomorrow. But with me, I have my, my agent from General Land Leasing. Mr. Chair, um, um.
Thank you. Thank you. Honorable Daniels, for your information, tomorrow's church land use permit regulations work session has been postponed and will be rescheduled because there's a meeting that was scheduled even canceled. So, go ahead, um, your agents.
I'll go ahead now, refer, uh, with my, my, my presentation.
Okay, go ahead. Press star six to unmute.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, Ms. Johnson, go ahead. Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, this is Stevie Hudson. I'm the leasing agent with the General Land Development Department.
Okay, Ms. Hudson, go ahead.
I'm helping, uh, Mr. Daniels with this, um, mission site permit. Uh, we did try to contact Mr. Lincoln Johnson yesterday and today. There was no answer, but we did leave a voicemail. Um, it's, it's a renewal, uh, permit for one acre um, in Shanto.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Daniels?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, um, as indicated by Ms. Hudson, yeah, she tried to reach out to get a hold of, uh, Mr. Lincoln Johnson, yesterday and this morning. All the supporting documents are attached, like, uh, the chapter resolutions, um, the letter from the grazing official, official. Mr. Chair, thank you.
A question like, Honorable Daniels, Honorable Members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions? But then, yeah, RDC has final authority on this. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I'm gonna vote green.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, I, I apologize here. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, could you, um, uh, withdraw your vote, please? We have, we have an amendment. Okay. A question, uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Tahy, if you would, uh, read this amendment in for the record. Ms. Khan, was that what you were gonna state?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and yes, that was exactly what I was gonna state. Thank you for picking that up. I'll go unmute now.
Thank you. Mr. Tahy, could you read that in for the record, please?
Yes, Chair, and I was gonna make note of that, too. Um, Chair members of RDC, this is amendment number one to legislation zero zero four one dash twenty-two. One, page two, line nine, insert the word between two thousand thirteen and states the following. Complaints, March twenty-fifth two thousand thirteen, letter states, to my knowledge, no grazing permittee. Two, page two, line two, replace the word New Mexico with the word Arizona. Three, read number or re-letter succeeding paragraph sections and/or exhibits accordingly if necessary. And this amendment shall supersede inconsistent language contained in any other committee amendments, which shall be conformed to the intent or language of this amendment. The Office of Legislative Services with notice to the sponsor of this legislation is hereby authorized to make necessary grammical change. Chair, that is amendment number one, read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Tahy. Honorable Members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second on amendment one.
Chairman, I motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Second by?
Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, thank you. Yeah. Any comments or questions on the amendment? Uh, here none. We'll put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Big Gay sent his message in as green. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, and Chair not voting. Motion carries on amendment one. Back to the main motion. Any comments or questions? I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Big Gay votes green according to his text message. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart? Honorable Stewart? We have a vote of four. Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Honorable Stewart votes green. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting. Motion carries. Thank you very much, honorable colleagues. We have one of our colleagues on the call with us and I'll have him introduce himself. Honorable Otto Sol. Honorable Otto Sol.
Can you hear me?
Oh, go ahead.
I had to unmute myself. Uh, I'm trying to unmute myself. Anyway, um, but, uh, I'm, I'm on the line. My name is Otto Sol. Uh, Delegate for Chuba City. Chairman and, uh, members of the Resources Development Committee.
Thank you, Honorable Sol, for being on the call with us. Honorable Members of RDC, we're down to see under new business, approving to attend and participate in the New Mexico Cattle Growers Association Midyear Meeting at the Ruidoso Convention Center in Ruidoso, New Mexico from June twelfth to June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Would like to have a motion and a second?
Motion, Stewart?
Honorable Stewart? Second by?
Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, thank you. Any comments, questions? I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Big Gay? Honorable Big Gay texts his vote in as green. Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Green, thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting, motion carries. Down to D, approving an in-person work session with the Division of Natural Resources, Department of Minerals for legislation on obtaining primacy for Friday, April first, twenty twenty-two at nine AM. April Fool's Day. Let's have a motion and a second.
Chairman, I'll motion Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, thank you. Second by?
Stewart.
Honorable Stewart, thank you. Any comments or questions? But then, yeah. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Big Gay texted his vote as green. Okay, there you are. Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero. Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. Motion carries. Thank you. We have one report today, and after this, some of us will be driving to Chobonito to end up. So, on the report, A. Yes, Honorable Freeland?
Chairman, I'm sorry for interrupting. I'm at the service right now, so I'm gonna ask to be excused at this time. Also, I'll do my best to call in this afternoon, as I will be attending the burial in Tohachi this afternoon. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you for representing leadership at the funeral. So, I know she was a very respected person, so Honorable Freeland, for your service. We're on receiving reports, number five, A, report from Western Sky Community Care on their managed care organization and services provided. Presenter will be Mr. Zane James, Mr. Eric Luhon, Nicole Pino, and Shayna Ramon. Mr. James, you have twenty minutes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, and also members of the Navajo Nation Resources Development Committee, honorable delegates, and also key staff, and also the listeners, appreciate you all giving us the floor. So, Mr. Chair, I think you again for giving us this opportunity. If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'll have my colleagues introduce themselves, and then I can do a brief introduction on the purpose of our presentation, and we can proceed from there, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
That's good. Yes, go ahead. Your colleagues may now introduce themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for having us. My name is Eric Luhon. I'm the Director of Tribal Relations for Western Sky Community Care. I am from Tauspabul and Okeewengue. I oversee the tribal relations department, the interactions between Indian Health Service, tribal leadership, and our company, Western Sky Community Care, and the Centene Corporation. Thank you for having us.
Hello, good morning. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us today. My name is Nicole Pino. I am the supervisor of our tribal leaders here at Western Sky Community Care. I will pass it over to Shayna now. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, hello, good morning. My name is Shayna Ramon. I'm originally from Tostado, New Mexico. I currently live in Albuquerque. I am the Sales Executive for WellCare, and I oversee sales operations in northwestern part of New Mexico, and thank you for having us.
Thank you.
I'm Cameron Franklin. Oh, excuse me.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm Cameron Franklin. I do the same thing Shayna does here in Arizona, handling Navajo, Apache, and Coconino Counties for WellCare and Centene in Arizona.
Thank you. Mr. James?
Mr. Chair and members of the Development Committee, thank you again for giving us this opportunity. As my colleagues have introduced themselves, I personally work for Western Sky Community Care. We are managed care organization on the New Mexico side. We are all sister organizations of a larger company called Centene Corporation, and at Centene, our motto is transforming the health of the community, one person at a time, and that's really what we're trying to accomplish here today is to do some outreach to the Navajo Nation leadership on the services that we provide, both on the Arizona and the New Mexico side, in reference to Medicaid and Medicare. So, again, I thank you. I know you all have a very busy agenda. Just wanted to send my condolences to the loss of the Navajo Nation community that Mr. Freeland, Mr. Mark Freeland is attending. I want to send condolences on behalf of our company here at Centene, and also Western Sky, and the other sister organizations that we have. But basically, what we've been doing on the New Mexico side for Western Sky Community Care is we're providing Medicaid insurance for our Navajo Nation constituents, and also for the complete state of New Mexico. We've done a lot of partnerships with Navajo Nation organizations, just grassroots work in the local communities and providing services in that regard. So, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Mr. Eric Luhon. Just really quickly, Mr. Chair, I don't know how you want us to proceed. Do you want us to give you back the floor after each presenter, and we proceed from there, or do you just want us to go through the whole presentation, and then turn the floor back over to you?
Mr. James, just go ahead and use up the whole twenty minutes that we gave you, and just go through your presentation one after the other. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chair. With that said, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Mr. Eric Luhon.
Thank you, Zane. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I mentioned before, I'm the Director of the Program, and really, Western Sky Community Care in New Mexico is a Medicaid managed care organization. We work primarily with low-income individuals, as well as individuals needing long-term care services. That's part of my function. The other part of my role is to help with business development, access to care, and addressing social determinants of health within our tribal communities. So, a lot of what I do is I work with tribal programs to address items like food insecurity. We try to address healthy living, healthy access to healthy foods. I also work with tribal programs in order to help develop and build access to services, and this can range from providing donations and sponsorships to organizations to help develop services such as telemedicine, or in some cases, providing technical assistance to tribal programs to help them build the capacity to collect third-party reimbursements from organizations like Western Sky, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Presbyterian. We're not, we don't discriminate. We provide this service to all tribal programs, and regardless of what members have in terms of their Medicaid services, our goal is really to help build capacity for tribal programs to deliver services to our Native American members. And so, since we're kind of short on time, I did just wanna introduce one of the program that we do have. Western Sky Community Care actually oversees multiple programs in New Mexico. Shayna will go into one of them, but the other program that we do have is called AM Better. This is with the Marketplace in New Mexico. This is also through the organization called Be Well, New Mexico. This is with the Marketplace, Obamacare. This is health insurance for individuals that don't qualify for Medicaid, aren't eligible for Medicare yet, but are in that middle range and looking for additional services. And so, I'd be happy to reach out to individuals if they have questions. Otherwise, I will turn it over to Nicole Pino to give us a brief overview of services for Western Sky.
Thank you, Eric. So, Eric had and Zane had gave some information about Western Sky already, so I will go ahead and move forward and just provide a brief overview of Medicaid itself, and also provide some specific information pertaining to our New Mexico Medicaid plan. So, New Mexico is a little bit on Medicaid in general, is that Centene Care is the name for the New Mexico Medicaid Managed Care Program. Medicaid helps cover your physical health, behavioral health, long-term care, and community benefits. So, Medicaid is a joint federal-state program that helps pay healthcare services for low-income individuals, including children, adults, parents, caretakers, expectant mothers, aged and disabled individuals. So, eligibility for Medicaid program is really based on citizenship, residency, income, and other factors. Native Americans who are eligible for both Medicare and Medicaid, or maybe need nursing facilities of low care, are required to enroll into Centene Care, but all other Native Americans may choose to enroll into Centene Care or access service through what they call fee-for-service Medicaid through the Human Service Department. So, once an individual enrolls onto a New Mexico Medicaid plan, they will have an option to select a managed care organization, and a managed care organization intends to provide high-quality healthcare, and this is at no cost, or it is also there to provide access to care coordination, some educational programs, and other services. So, in New Mexico, there are three managed care organizations. All are obligated to offer the same basic benefits, but offer additional services that help make them different, and these are called value-added services. So, what I'm gonna do now is just share my screen of our Western Sky website and walk you through on where to find some information about the additional services we provide. So, on our website, you're gonna select members, and of course, we have all our product lines, our Medicaid, Medicare, and Marketplace plan. So, there's some additional information that you're welcome to view. Once you select our Medicaid plan, you'll be able to view our benefits and services, of course, some benefits overview, our long-term care services, telemedicine, and other information. But if we click here, our value-added services, these are extra benefits that we offer members. I won't go through all of them, and I did wanna highlight that for Native Americans, we do offer the Native American traditional healing benefit, and really, this is the reimbursement to help improve your physical and physical health, as well as your overall well-being. And members are allowed up to two hundred fifty dollars per member, per calendar year. We also offer a doula program for expecting mothers, along with full Medicaid maternity services. So, again, these are just some basic information that we have to offer. Last thing, I did wanna let you know some information pertaining to upcoming events and meetings that we may have that you are welcome to attend. If you click the events portion, you'll be able to find some events that we do throughout the community. And I know Zane touched on this briefly, but we do do some grassroots outreach, one of them including we do provide firewood giveaway. We did it last year at Bishop Rock Chapel House, partnering, of course, with the Navajo Nation President. And so, this is just some generic information, but we do have our Native American Inspire Series meeting on March third, which is tomorrow, starting at three p.m. You guys are all welcome to attend, but any of our Western Sky members who do attend will receive a twenty-five-dollar gift card. And all the information, call in, along with the Zoom link are on here. So, I guess I'll pass it over to Shayna to go over our Medicare product.
Thank you, Nicole. So, I am going to go over WellCare. I have our slide that I will be sharing. WellCare is our New Mexico Medicare plan through Centene, and we offer MAPD plans and PDP plans as well. Let me see here. Can you guys see my screen? Okay, good. So, we have our West Central Region, which is here in New Mexico. We have myself, Shayna Ramon. I am the Sales Executive, and then Ashley Avila, who is my counterpart, who is also the Sales Executive. She oversees the southeastern part of New Mexico. And then we have Deanna Noggle, who is our Fill Agency Sales Manager, who is based out of Arizona. And then we have our Regional Fill Director, Sean Johnson. He is also out of Arizona. And here to the left, we have a map of New Mexico. These are the counties that we are currently in, in New Mexico. We are in San Juan, McKinley, and Cibola, which are neighboring to the Navajo Nation. We serve the population there with our dual special needs plan, which is a really rich plan that we have here in New Mexico. And then we'll move over to Centene. As Nicole said, we have our Western Sky Medicaid plan, and then our WellCare by AllWell, which is the Medicare Advantage and Prescription Drug Plan for Centene, and AM Better, which is our Marketplace plan. And then we have So, we have our New Mexico service area. We are in the counties of Bernalillo, Chavez, Cibola, Currie, Dona Anna, Luna, McKinley, Clay, Roosevelt, San Juan, San Jose, Sandoval, Torrance, Valencia, and Tahu. We recently expanded to Rio Arriba this year. Here is our plan overview. These plans are now offered in New Mexico, but the two plans that we do highlight and focus on in the counties neighboring the Navajo Nation are the Dual Access and the Dual Liberty. And with this plan, they can get up to four thousand dollars in dental. They get extra benefits that are not covered through original Medicare. You know, you can get an over-the-counter benefit of three twenty-five per quarter, vision benefit, a utility flex card that helps with utility expenses. So, those plans, these types of plans are somewhat like the Medicaid as value-added services, but these are plans that are covered under the Part C that WellCare offers. And with these benefits, they don't get this under original Medicare. So, to be eligible for the Dual Special Needs Plan, the member will have to have the Medicaid and Medicare Part A and B, and so, we serve the population there, and that's all I have for today for time purposes, but we're always open to giving a high-level presentation when requested, and we're always open to answering questions that come. If you have a question, you can contact us directly. Thank you again for this time. And I'll go ahead and pass it over to my counterpart Cameron, who oversees Arizona.
Okay, sorry about that. Sorry about that, just getting the screen lined up here. Again, I do the same thing Shayna does, just over on the Arizona side. I'm gonna cover it real quick, because she covered some of the things that we do that are the same there. Actually, just a second here. Sorry about that, that was the wrong presentation. Is And we share the same management team, so they cover, or director and manager cover Nevada and New Mexico, as well as Arizona. And me, myself, Cameron, they're in the middle. I handle northern Arizona, which is your Coconino, Apache, Navajo, and Mojave Counties. And to cover our dual benefit plan here, again, you need both Medicare and Medicaid to qualify for these plans, or Medicaid Company in Navajo County is Care First, is the Medicaid program, just like Western Sky is in New Mexico. We do offer four thousand in dental as well, four hundred dollars for OTC, that's your vitamins, minerals, toilet paper, shampoo, things of that nature, per quarter. You get three hundred dollars towards vision. You do get a Sober and Fit Gym membership, which is an all-club, which means you can go to other gyms in other states as well. You get transportation to or from doctors, pharmacy, hearing, or vision appointments. You get meals when you're discharged from the inpatient hospital or skilled nursing facility. Also, a thousand dollars a year flex card. That's added to your dental vision or hearing, so go above and beyond that three hundred for vision and go up to five hundred and fifty dollars for vision, as well as up to four thousand seven hundred and fifty for dental, so you get a large amount for dental coverage. Also offered this year is a fifty-dollar utility benefit, which can help you with propane, electric bills, things of that nature, as long as they qualify. It's a subcategory, and hearing coverage. That's who we broker through for our That's who we broker through for, or transportation, foods. Does have CST, which is our I fall and I can't get up button. Medications, setting doctor's appointments, transportation, things of that nature. Sober and Fit, and again, hearing care solutions for the hearing. Again, we're out there to assist the members. There's the Flex Card, again, I mentioned that. So that's additional above and beyond your dental vision and hearing. The utility benefit, again, you could qualify for an extra $50 a month towards that. We also give you health rewards if you get your annual wellness visit. You'll get a $50 gift card, flu vaccine, $25. So those are all self-attested and they send you a gift card in the mail. All right. Thank you for your time. I want to get through there. I think we got just under the 20 minutes.
Mr. Zane James?
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you again, also members of the committee. We really appreciate the time that you've given us today. I know we kind of went through this, this presentation pretty fast, but we will be happy to share the slides that Shayna shared. Also, Mr. Cameron Franklin, his slides as well. We will, I will forward those to Mr. Tahie, so that you all can review. And again, really, our purpose is how can we help the Navajo Nation to provide better healthcare services to the Navajo Nation public? And as you see, we do not only cover New Mexico, but we also cover portions of Arizona, a really big portion of Arizona now with Arizona, with Navajo, Apache and Coconino Counties. So we're here to help. As Eric stated, we're here for sponsorships as well. If you ever need any assistance in any, in any capacity, Mr. Chair, and also members of the committee, feel free to reach out to us. And even those individuals that are on the call, if you have any ideas on how we can coordinate and collaborate to provide better services for our Navajo Nation constituents, we're here to help in any way. We do have a working relationship with the Department of Corrections on, in the Crown Point area, looking at expanding services within the detention centers in Crown Point. Also, we do have a great working relationship with Shiprock Behavior Health Services, Department of Behavior Health Services as well, to meet the needs, the mental and social needs of our people as well. So with that, we stand for any questions, if there are any, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. James, also your colleagues, Honorable Members of RDC. Let's have a motion and a second. Motion, Stuart. Honorable Stuart? Thank you, Honorable Stuart and Honorable Daniel, seconds. Honorable Members of RDC, we're open for discussions. Do you have any comments or questions? Mr. James, some questions that was texted us is about how how many Navajos are enrolled in your organization? And also, I think when you send us your presentation, we would also have more questions. But currently, could you answer that question, sir?
Mr. Chair, members of the Resources Development Committee, I'd be happy to answer that. Currently, as of today, we have about 2,400 Navajo members enrolled within our Western Sky Community Care Plan. Thank you.
Chairman Freeland? Honorable Freeland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning. Zane, presenters from Western Sky. Centene, good morning. Thank you for that question, that was my question. I also had questions related to the total number of Navajos enrolled overall in Centennial Care. And how many are enrolled in MCOs versus how many are opted for fee-for-service? Is there a distinction or breakdown you can provide for us on that number? As I know the state provides updates every month on enrollment. The other question relates to Navajos potentially getting their own MCO. You all would, of course, be a competitor at that point. How would you feel about going into competition with Navajo? If that ever comes to fruition, as far as that's concerned, being a fourth option or fourth MCO potential on, with the establishment of a Navajo MCO? As well as, you know, looking at the three current MCOs that are contracted with the state, who, who has the largest number of enrollment of Navajo people? And then who's second, and then who's third? Those are my questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Mr. James, your response, sir?
Mr. Chair, in reference to that question, I'm going to turn the floor over to our Director of Travel Relations, Mr. Eric Luhan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Honorable Mark Freeland, thank you for your questions. Let's see if I can capture all of them. The, currently, the Medicaid program has about, it's about a 52% split, 48% split on Native Americans actually enrolled in Centennial Care. And so when I first started working in, in, in healthcare services, we saw that those numbers of about 80% in fee-for-service and 20% in managed care. And so you've seen there's a huge trend in Native Americans actually opting in to manage care, at least in the New Mexico side. In terms of population, yes, Presbyterian does have a larger number of Native American members. The state of New Mexico does send us numbers on actual enrollments by tribe or by county. And so it's very difficult to pinpoint exactly how many Navajo members are in each program. But as, as of right now, Presbyterian does have the most Native Americans enrolled in their health plan. Blue Cross, Blue Shield after that, and Western Sky is the third of that organization. And in terms of the Indian Managed Care Organization, you know, we are, we are a provider in New Mexico. We will continue to be a Medicaid provider in New Mexico. We understand that there is potentially an RFP released for the New Mexico Centennial Care Program, going to be released probably in September. Of course, we are going to be responding to that. And we anticipate that we will continue to be in New Mexico, providing Medicaid services to all of the populations. As far as adding additional managed care organizations, I do not have any information on that. Of course, the RFP process for the state of New Mexico is, is only going to be, I believe, 60 days. And so the last time Centennial Care went to RFP, I know there was 12 different managed care organizations responding to that. We anticipate a similar amount of outside organizations trying to vie for that contract. And in terms of competition with Indian Managed Care entity, you know, we already partner with several tribes not in New Mexico. So we have an existing relationship with the Eastern Bennett Cherokee in Carolina. We've got several tribes in Oklahoma that we're working with to develop Indian Managed Care Organizations. And so we are perfectly willing to assist in developing or in competition. As far as I understand, the Indian Managed Care entity, I mean, that's still on the table in New Mexico, we will continue to provide Medicaid services through the state of New Mexico as well.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Honorable Freeland, do you have a follow-up question?
No, Chairman, just a comment, and thank you, Mr. Luhan, and good morning. Just understanding how Centennial Care works in New Mexico. And especially, you know, myself former, being formerly involved with managed care at one point in my, during my career with press and Blue Cross. You know, I understand, this is going back as far as when it was Salud, back to the Salud days. So understandably, the options that our people are gaining. But, you know, I really, I'm hopeful that our MCOs, and the MCOs that are currently contracted, the three right now, can get more involved with our, with the, with our Navajo people, Navajo communities especially. And I bring this up because, you know, during the height of the pandemic, we could have used a lot of help. And we got hit really hard with COVID. And we, we were trying to find resources. I went through thick and thin to get resources from Albuquerque. And thank goodness, Curlin Air Force Base stepped up and helped us. I, you know, in the future, if you guys, if you guys ever could provide some assistance, if, you know, God forbid, if we ever run into another pandemic. But, you know, the rural areas, the remote areas, our grassroots people, we're the ones who took it the hardest. The ones that don't have running water, the ones that don't have electricity. And I bring this up because, you know, as a delegate, as a leader, we were out there. I was out there when the emergency was declared. You know, we were delivering food and supplies to our people. And thank goodness, you know, we still have these partnerships established with, you know, with various organizations throughout Albuquerque, who still help our Navajo people out here. But, you know, if there's any way you all can maybe look at something like that, a partnership with our chapters or with our communities, you know, I have eight chapters in Eastern Agency. And my chapters are in McKinley and San Juan County. We have, they follow under two service units, under Crown Point and Shiprock. And I really have to commend IXS. I really have, I'm so thankful for what they did for our people, them being there, you know, through thick and thin. And especially when they, when the vaccines came out. Such a remarkable group of individuals from, from the service units. And we have to really be thankful for IXS, especially Navajo area, for what they did for our people. And you have to, you have, we have so much stories, so much experiences to take back during this whole COVID pandemic. And, you know, I really am hopeful in the future that our MCOs that have our Navajo people enrolled can help us at some point and help, help our Navajo people, you know, generally, just, just with, we still need PPE, we still need, we still need, we still need food and water delivered. Our elders need firewood, but thank goodness it's warming up. But it's, it's simple things like that that we needed. And, you know, like I said, it was, it was really heartbreaking to go out into these areas and see our people, you know, really afraid and really scared because there was a lot of uncertainty as to what was going to happen and what was happening. But as a leader, we have to reassure our people to be there for them. And I think that's what we did our best to do. Partnerships is everything. Partnerships mean the world to us. When we can get resources, when we can provide resources for our people, just to bring them comfort, to reassure them that, you know what, it's going to be okay, everything's going to be fine. And we're still dealing with that today. You know, we're still dealing with the lack of running water, the lack of electricity. And I'm hopeful we can address that on our side. But, you know, when you have elders, especially when you have veterans that are really asking for help and you want to do everything that you can to help them. You know, just, just, just some stories from the pandemic. And, you know, and not, not just to say with Western Skies that you guys weren't knowing, you know, we also have Blue Cross and World was Press as well, you know? And I, I, I just have to feel that way because we could have used a lot of help out here. We could have used everyone's help out here during that time. And it was a lot of, like I said, a lot of uncertainty. So, Eddie, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to mention that and say thank you to Western Skies and Team for your presentation this morning. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Members of RDC, do you have any other comments or questions? There's none, so I'll give the floor back to Mr. Zane James and make your closing statement, sir.
Mr. Chair, and also members of the committee, and also my brother, Mark Freeland, thank you for your questions and your comments as well. I just wanted to highlight that I know the Navajo Nation was hit hard throughout this whole pandemic. I've been working from home and I work out of Wind Rock, Arizona. And we've been hit, we were, were obviously in the midst of all of this. And many of us lost loved ones. I lost my father to the pandemic. Four days later, I lost my, his only, his only older sister. And, you know, those stories are constant throughout, throughout not just Navajo country, but Indian country, throughout the country. With that said, we, Western Sky, I feel like really stepped up to the plate in reference to assisting the Navajo communities. At the early onset, we worked with Eastern Agency, Mr. Johnny Johnson, delivering PPEs to the Standing Rock Chapter, working with Eastern Agency Council. Additionally, we worked closely with Rita Capitan in the Crown Point area to distribute our water and other PPEs in that area as well. As a matter of fact, Eric and I were out there unloading cases of water throughout the, throughout the pandemic. We also worked with the Shiprock Chapter twice in last winter and this previous winter in doing with distribution drives where we gave free wood to the Navajo Nation community within the Shiprock area. We utilized Rio West Mall as a hub to distribute PPEs early in the onset of the, of the pandemic as well. Shiprock is one area that we did back-to-school drives where we distributed school bags and school supplies for our Navajo Nation children. Just last fall, we distributed, I believe it was 20 pairs of shoes to the, to the Crown Point CHR office there. So we're constantly doing these outreach works in Navajo communities. And, and a lot of our focus again is the grassroots area, the remote areas. Because we, I think that's one of the things of this MCO, that this managed care organization that sets us apart, is we have a tribal relations department that responds directly to our company CEO. And that's where Mr. Eric Luhan works closely with our CEO. So they understand the need in Indian country as well. You know, we partnered with Navajo Nation President Jonathan Nez in Shiprock, where our CEO, Gene Williams, came out and we, the handing out distribution of wood to our elderly out there. So, you know, we're, we're here to help and I appreciate Mr. Freeland's comments. And, and, you know, we have other projects that are coming up. I'd be happy to reach out to Mark, Mr. Freeland. Like to sit down with you on some, some, some really, I think, innovative approaches that we're, we're working on in reference to addressing the healthcare needs of our people. So with that said, Mr. Chair, I really, again, appreciate all, all the work that you all do. I know it's very, very hard and difficult to, to, during these times, to address the needs of our people.
Thank you very much, Mr. James. Honorable Members of RDC, if there's no further comments or questions, we can vote on it. But then, yeah. We'll go ahead and vote to accept a report from Western Sky Community Care. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote Green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay? Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland? Text his vote as green. Honorable Stuart? Honorable Stuart?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay? We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting, motion carries. We'll accept the report. Thank you very much, Mr. James. Moving down to number eight, close of meeting. Mr. Tahie, any other announcements? I know we have a meeting today at 2:00 that end up in person.
Chair, I have no other announcements today.
Okay. And Navagia hit tomorrow. And then Friday, we have the meeting in Aztec. So, motion to adjourn?
Chair, I motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Any comments or questions? None. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote Green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay? Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland, vote's green. Honorable Freeland votes green. He just sent a text message. Honorable Stewart?
Green. Green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay? We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting, motion carries. We are officially adjourned at 10:25 a.m. Shannan, be safe out there. And may God bless each and every one of you that are on the call with us today. How it going?